Okay, we call tonight's meeting to order, or select on regular meeting on October twenty first, two thousand twenty five, and Bob Carlson before selectmen, and we also select one Brett Mastriani, selectwoman Nicole Porta. Please rise for the National Anthem, no, I'm not gonna sing, Pledge of Allegiance. I'm saving my rendition of the National Anthem for the town meeting. I know I can empty the room out really quick. Okay, with that said, we have public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if it's not on the agenda, you want to speak about it, you can go to that podium, turn on the microphone, tell us who you are, and you can speak. Anybody online, Brett?
Uh, there's one person.
Yep, I see waving, yep.
Hi, Bob, Brett, Nicole.
Hello.
Hi, we'll be getting to that shortly, thank you for coming, um, not yet. So it's not, um, it's probably not what you think, John, or it's, so John is asking is the donation policy about the, um, probably what we talked about with the giving clause and that kind of stuff, you mean? No, it's not, it's a, uh, give you an example, we have a coach, basketball coach, who last year ran a clinic, clinic, and let's say he made five thousand dollars running a basketball clinic. Instead of taking the check, he wanted to then donate back to the Wheel of Boosters Club. So it's, it's all about how we're gonna do policies like that, but it's not what, it's that donation policy is not about what you think it was, okay? Soon as the red light comes on, you're good. Oh, go ahead, push it again, hard, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, all righty, John Otchukas, Rocky Halliroy, Rocky Hollow Road. All right, I would like to make a public comment. I've been watching, and as I'm sure a lot of town members have, the past few finance meetings and town selectman meetings, and I watched the original giving closet meeting back last year. I think the challenge that I had with this past finance committee meeting was how the selectman gave the giving closet a zero budget, but then passed it forward um, to use to appropriate funds. And I just don't think as a policy moving forward, it's a slippery slope, and I don't think, I would recommend, I would like to ask that the selectman not use that approach moving forward. Cause it's, it just seems not above board, it doesn't seem totally transparent. I was there, I was listening in on that meeting back in two thousand twenty four, where you approved her to move forward as a five oh one C three. The whole giving closet is just a little challenging for me. I don't know this woman, she's very emotional, and I get the passion, but it comes off almost as unhinged. And I, I just, I, listen, I, I volunteer with five oh one C threes, I've worked for five oh one C threes, I give to five oh one C threes. Her presentation, I just don't think she's a good steward, a representative of accurate financial fiduciary funding. She needs maybe to have somebody else on her board step up. It's just, it, it's a little bit of a hot mess, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Moving forward, I would also like to see the town, and I, I wrote all of you an email back, I think last year, about my thoughts around funding five oh one C threes, there needs to be guardrails, a policy. You, you know, the town is not a philanthropy arm, like, there needs to be some guidance set up. At my work, I'm part of a committee that where we give donations and grants to five oh one C threes, and we have a metric that we follow. And I just hope that the town establishes or creates something like that, so that there's guidelines. Cause there's a lot of five oh one C threes, and I mean, I can just imagine people forming five oh one C threes for everything, trying to get town funding.
So we do have guy rails, but I need to put them down similar, we just did this with the speed mitigation. We had policies on how, how that process would work, but I just recently put it on paper and actually put it on the front page of the quarterly. Very similar to what we did in the village with speed humps. So we do have policies we follow, but I need to put them on paper, so we can know what they are. Back to the, that position, I mean, just the given clauses, and I'm not gonna get into whether they should have got funded or not, we, I spent, we spent many of them.
Many, too much time.
But I will say, um, the only reason, and this has never happened to us before, where we've given someone a zero or a low budget number, and then had them come back and give them, cause you, as you said, it doesn't seem right, it doesn't seem transparent on our part, like, why would you give them zero, then give them more? But there's something about this that was different. During the budget, if you look at the April twenty first meeting, I think, the budget hearing, we said, listen, we'd love to give you the money, however, you are not a five oh one C three, we don't give money to anybody, it's not a five, we do give money to some five oh one C threes, like Parkland Neighborhood and TBCC and so on, you are not that. So we were, we pretty much said to her, go get your five oh one C three, come back to us when you have it, and we'll have this discussion again. So that happened after the budget closed. That's the only reason we entertained it again, because we asked her to do something, she did it. But we, she didn't come back with the same portfolio, because now she had something she didn't have during budget season. That's the only reason that was handled that way.
Sure, and I, I guess my, the guidance, and I remember that meeting, and I just thought, gosh, I don't know if that guidance is great, because again, there's not guardrails. And in my email, I clearly identified, one of the metrics that we have in our corporation is that how, what are other sources of funding? Like, if I saw a five oh one C three come through, and they were only funded by a town, I'm like, this is not sustainable. The town, you don't know what kind of budget a town is gonna have. Like, you want a five oh one C three to have a varied source of funding, so that they're not reliant on one source. It just makes them more sustainable. And, and she's not there yet, and so I thought, telling her to get her five oh one C three document, there should have been more behind that, like, you need to get your five oh one C three, and you need to have X, Y, and Z, one, two, like, that's the policy, like, there needs to be that kind of metric. When a five oh one C three comes up in front of the town asking for funding, okay, you have this, 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 and this. Where, what are your other sources of funding? How long have you been established? Whatever that, that policy looks like.
My understanding is the Board of Finance is talking about that on their board, and looking into creating a Board of Finance policy on it. But I, I agree with you, it, it should be something we have. And I just wanna mention, I, I don't know if we intentionally left that in the budget. I didn't look at it that way to, to then give it funding. We did say, go get your, your five oh one C three, and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
We never guaranteed the money, um, I wanna be clear on that part of it. But we did say we would discuss it, and I was always under the impression, my previous years on the Board of Finance and, and in town politics is, when we left something in the budget, a line, and we would vote on at least one dollar in there. I've never seen a zero line stay in the budget. So when I look back, I thought that would just be in the budget moving forward, because if it's not funded with at least, that was always Nick's explanation when we've talked about things. But I don't think we intentionally left it in there to then give it funding in the future, because at some point, we would just vote to, to try to give it approve something for, if that was the case. That was my understanding, but I agree with you, we should have some guidelines, because as we see, especially with funding being cut from nonprofits across the board by the state and federal government, they are looking at municipalities to, to help with more of these things. So having a policy would be clear, not only for us, but for the five oh one C threes that are asking.
You're asking for a thousand, well, you need to have three thousand in the bank, like, something that, some kind of guidance, guidelines, parameters, that's, that's.
Do you wanna say something before I say something else, or?
No, I mean, um, I, I think, um, both, I, I hate to even use the word sides, but I think both sides learned a lot in this process. And I think it's one thing that we can do as a board, we can always go back and reflect on decisions we made, things we've said. There's something to be said for having everything, you know, memorialized in, in YouTube and, and social media. So I think we've all learned a lot in the process.
Yeah.
And I think that we're gonna need to do some really deep thinking about how to move forward after this.
I agree, Nicole, also the, um, so we know that all five oh one C threes aren't created equal.
Correct.
Each, every one that we fund, it's not an automatic rubber stamp, because you got money last year, you get it this year. It was about, it was eleven or twelve in there, like I said, Parkland Neighborhood, TBCCA, Always Home, State Futures, there's a few of them. Every year, they have to, they send us letters with a history of what they did the previous year with the funds we gave them. And we vet it out, and sometimes we're lower, sometimes we'll, if they might ask for more, we might not give it to them, or we might even lower. If they don't send me that information, you'll see them in the budget as a zero. They don't automatically get it, so this past budget, I don't have them with me, but I think there's at least three that got money the previous year, got nothing last past year, because they didn't ask for it.
Sure.
So we're not just handing it out without getting it out. And I think this is a brand new five oh one C three, and they're gonna either make it or not make it, depending on how their board works together, how they come together, just learning process for them also. It's, it's one thing to have a big heart and try to do wonderful things, but you need, there's a business side to it also.
One thousand percent.
And I think that the, um, we'll know, because, just because they got that money now, if they come back in budget season and ask for money again, whatever that number is, it's gonna be vetted out by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the, the general public.
Right, there's gonna be a lot of scrutiny, for sure.
Yeah, so I think, and then, and when you had new like this, and there were so many questions this year with this, I think they're gonna get vetted out even more so than on Parkland Neighborhood, or that's been around for a number of years, so.
I mean, do you, for, for the other five oh one C threes, do, is there a threshold? Okay, you want X amount of dollars, you have to serve X amount of North Stonington residents.
And that's what we have in the, so when they, like, I know how many meals on wheels get given to North Stonington residents from TBCCA. Each one sends a report on how they helped the town. If they walk into my office and say, can you add me this year for the first time? I'll say, well, what do you do for North Stonington? If they, if they can't show that they can do something for our town, we don't, we don't even entertain them.
But I'm even going beyond that, not even show me, like, I wanna see how, like, if you don't reach a certain number, a certain percentage, then the funding drops. That, that's, so having some, like, a data point, a metric, that, a parameter that holds them accountable. Cause anybody can say, I, I'm doing good for North Stonington, um, but there needs to be a measurable amount. You want twenty thousand, okay, you better be serving X amount of, or something, like.
You might wanna send your email to the, like I said, I, I think the Board of Finance is working.
Send it to the Board of Finance.
Okay, so they are discussing that at some point, so.
I'm not sure if Michael Anderson shared that with the rest of the Board of Finance, is, I'm just curious, I need to reach out to Michael.
Well, now it's out there publicly, so I'm sure it will, I'm sure it will be.
Thank you.
If your organization has a rubric or a metric that you use, I drop it off to Bob in Town Hall.
I will certainly share that.
Certainly try and incorporate that, if we do start to put these guardrails on, you're talking about, it would be nice to have something to refer to.
We have a meeting next week on it for our next round of funding and grants, so yeah, it's great. Cause we get a lot of requests.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment on line or person? None? Okay. Um, are there, I'm just taking a motion for approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve, October seventh, twenty twenty five minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, um, is there any discussion? Okay, you're non-olds is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, three zero approves, thank you. Next, um, uh, selectman comments, are there any comments by either selectmen?
I have two or three. So I'll start off by saying, you know, this is my last regularly scheduled Board of Selectman meeting, whether we call one or not. And it's me stepping away from eighteen years of elected office, for at least the next two years. I will say that, at least the next two years. But as I, I reflect on some of these things, it's been a pleasure serving with you guys, especially Bob for, since I started. But as I start looking at things, some of the things that came up recently, that I, I, I hope you guys look into, one will, is definitely about the giving closet. And I, I know I did mention this at the last meeting, but if, if everything is proceeding like it is, which is great, I'm, I'm glad there is some support there for it. But I do think that the town should then enter into a lease, since it is a nonprofit. Um, and whether that's a dollar, or whether you account for what that really is, and then add that into the budget cycle next year, so that shows that way. But I think going forward, at least for the rest of this fiscal year, you probably should enter into at least a dollar lease. So there is some liability, um, legal liability on both parties of understanding what the expectations are from each group. And then second, as I see the emails going back and forth from the library to the Board of Finance about some of the change of scope in the questions being asked, it, it makes me think that a lot of that, those questions being asked should have been, or maybe now with the new scope, be done by the Board of Selectmen, or maybe you, you call it in as a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, because a lot of the in-depth questions they're asking are something the Board of Selectmen should have dove into. Because when I listened to the Board of Finance meeting regarding the giving closet, and there was a lot of good back and forth, and knowing what Board of Finance overarching's goal is, is to say, does something make sense financially for the town to do? Not whether, hey, what is this HVAC system gonna look like, or, or how's the scope changing? It doesn't make sense. And I think our job as selectmen is to vet some of that out too, and then say, the Board of Finance just says, hey, this, this makes financial sense for the town. So maybe knowing this is going forward, and knowing it's going to be a bigger conversation for the community, maybe those meetings are joint, and so the selectmen can ask questions regarding that as well, and everybody's on the same page. And it's more of a discussion compared to what we saw with the giving closet, a back and forth after some things were said behind the scenes, some things in front of what's going on, and everyone's comfortable moving something forward in a positive way that helps the community out, and it doesn't overshadow one thing or another. I, I, I was thinking about it as I read all the emails back and forth and the questions, and I'm like, this is something that not just the Board of Finance should be doing, but really the selectmen should be part of that. So, um, I, I feel strongly about that. And then as of today, when I went to sign checks, and we had one that came up for the HVAC system, and I did send an email to Bob, and Bob, well, actually, I didn't sign the check, I will be honest, I didn't sign the check, I put a question on it and said, hey, where are the other quotes for this? Because it's over our policy. I think it's so important for the next administration, whether it's the, what board it's on, our board, um, Board of Ed, planning zoning, that we follow the purchasing policy that we all worked hard on. So that means if, if it's over a certain dollar value, we need certain quotes. So Bob, I respected your email that you sent to the school, saying now that we, the municipality are taking over those, those things, that we need to abide by those policies, and I hope that we, we do that, and I hope somebody else doesn't sign that check, just to make sure that that question's asked. What are we doing with the town funds? How are we making sure our taxpayers' dollars are spent according to plan, and that we're not overspending? Because it's nice when money's coming in, and we're in a good position right now, but look at the towns around us, that doesn't stay that way. And I worry about the time that we don't have that funding, and now we can't fund this, or we can't pay for something on the school, without going back to the community. So I just think that purchasing policy that we've worked on, it should be a, a standard of how we make sure we're spending our money. Cause I, you look at those communities around us, and we are very, very lucky in North Stonington, financially compared to the rest.
Agreed.
But I appreciate my time on, on the board.
I just wanna, um, uh, just comment. When I also was reading the emails and, and listening to the Board of Finance, I think that it is, um, the Board of Finance has two particular members who have a lot of construction background. And I think a lot of those questions came through. So for me, without a lot of that, I wouldn't not know. So when somebody like the library comes and presents a construction plan, I think in my mind, I have to depend on them to have done their due diligence, to ask, to enlist all of the correct people, to give them those answers. So to hear some of the questions now, I'm sure that the library might be a little bit frustrated, because they, I'm gonna make an assumption and hope that they have all of the answers that satisfy those questions, because I personally would not know enough to ask that level of detail on a proposal. If they have enlisted the help of Mystic Air Quality and, and, you know, all of that, I, I think that I make an assumption, because I don't have that expertise to lend to it. And, and to your point, I don't know if that's the Board of Finance's role, to make sure that they've got an appropriate HVAC system. That, did they get appropriate quotes to bring back? Yes, so I, I don't know, I mean, I would have, I would be hard pressed to ask the right construction questions on a project.
So I kind of agree with my construction, my construction background's residential, commercial is so different. And I know that when you've got Gary and Nino, who not only has a construction background in a major company, but he also is the president of the Board of the Library for ten years, so who knows that building better than he does? And then, you know, Dan being an engineer, and so on. So I agree on that point, I guess, I would say, yeah, they are doing, they're playing a role that would normally be played by the selectmen. And sometimes I think I kind of got frustrated with them, um, when we talked about the giving closet, because they wanted us to play one role, and they wanted to play our role, and they want us, and same thing with, we'll talk about it later with the, um, five-year capital plan where they asked us. Um, and that's fine, uh, sometimes the roles go back, because the personnel changes on boards, and you don't know where strengths are. But I think that, um, I don't disagree with the joint meeting idea, Brett, I think it's a probably a good idea, if nothing else, still listen. But I also think when it comes back to the Board of Selectmen, we'll have all that additional information to do, to consider before we decide if we wanna move into a town meeting, or maybe even a public hearing before a town meeting. So I think that still has a ways to go, I think your comments are well taken, Brett, and I think that in this particular case, you know, in the giving closet, you don't have to be an expert in certain things. In this particular case, I think Gary and Dan are much more in tune to asking those kind of questions than maybe we were, and now they're getting asked. Maybe we could have brought in somebody, maybe an engineer to ask those. As far as, I'm not really sure how we would do that, and maybe in the future, we have to consider that, maybe we're not, if the Board of Selectmen are not geared up for this kind of a project, because we don't have that background, maybe bring in someone that is.
I guess that's one of the benefits of government, right? Elected officials of the meeting that have expertise in all different aspects. And it's well, it is well represented in the Board of Finance, it's just, it's odd to even see it play out that way. It's beneficial to the community, that's for sure. So that's why I put a joint forward, because yes, we have the experts in everything. That's why you're a leg light liaison, and you're fantastic at it, but it, it's, it's nice to see that you are asking the tough questions. The last thing you want to do is have a local town meeting, these things come up at a town meeting, it's the library that takes back them, and residents don't know, because the answer's not there. It's, it's tough as it is to read through those and be like, oh, is that really their role, are they overstepping? But ultimately, the answer is.
Okay. I think sometimes with the tri-board too, we've got to know the members of the other boards, we know who knows the things that we maybe don't know, we can't.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're really blessed to have that expertise. I think, to your point, Brett, having a joint meeting where we can always, we can ask those questions together, and we can all benefit from those questions, I think that's, um, moving forward, that's a really good idea.
Okay, um, Gary, do you have a comment? Gary?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, well, first, I wanna thank Brett for his eighteen years of service as an elected official, parole granted. Now that we've covered that, celebration over. I just wanna make sure that any leases the town enter include rent, utilities, capital investment. You can waive it as far as the cost goes, but that ASL should be captured, so that the necessary approvals are done by the town at a town meeting. We have two leases right now, one for the firehouse and one for the old firehouse, that frankly, were signed by a previous administration on the assumption it was a dollar a year, therefore it was within the ASL, and it never went to a town meeting. That should be rectified before looming capital investments come to roost. I'm done, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, so you're done with your comments, and my, I'm gonna save my comments to the end, if you don't mind, Brett?
All right.
Let's move on to Avalonia, number seven, the Kincaid property. So in your packet, you saw that I sent an email to Dennis Main. And after the, the Board of Finance meeting and the Board of Selectman meeting, questions arose. And I asked basically, the three questions that I heard the most were, um, will this land, will the landing question remain as open space in perpetuity? Can the town get some assurances that the land will never be sold? And then Dennis sent us an email answering that question, that yes, the land will be held. Very, it's a very similar piece of land, they did in Bosworth, he sent that information to us, and to assure us that this land will always be held as open space. My second question was, what is the plan for the property, how will it be used, and what restrictions will there be? The answer to that question to say that, um, yes, the land will be consistent with other Osprey lands that they've taken over. But he also said the town of Stonington is welcome to provide input into the plan, which Avalonia will be happy to share through its development. So they're saying that they will keep this open space, very similar to other spaces that they've done in other towns, even in our town, but they will also have us, we can provide input. So that was the second question, and the third question was for me, will the entrances be coming on Babcock Road? And the answer is yes, the main entrance of Babcock is one possible entrance on, um, Rudeman, but that would only happen if, if it makes sense, and all the ducks are in a row. So if they can't do it, they can't do it, they already have, uh, entrances to the property off of Babcock through other existing properties. So that's, so the questions I've had answered. So what we've done with this is we've said, okay, we know this is a process, only because they're asking the town for seventy-five thousand dollars, the process is open eight dash twenty-four, review from the planning and zoning, which got approved by planning and zoning, and they sent us a long, um, uh, email on why they approved and what the synopsis was. Secondly, we said, okay, ask over to the Board of Finance, which it did. It went to the Board of Finance, and they got approved at the Board of Finance, to say, okay, we understand what they ask is, they know it's gonna come back to us and, and possibly to a town meeting. So they approved it at the Board of Finance meeting. Uh, I think that was quarter two. So now it's back in our lap, and I'm thinking that the questions that we have are representative from, um, uh, from Avalonia on, on hand, the questions are asked, were answered to my satisfaction. I'm not sure about the other two board members, that's up to you guys, but I did send you the packet with that information in it. And I guess tonight would be, do we wanna send this to the town meeting for a, um, so it can be vetted out by the residents and decide on whether the town should give the money or not. We know the money is a fund, the money is in the fund, it's consistent with the ordinance on how to spend it. And that's all a matter of whether the town wants to do that or not. So, um, we can take dialogue, we can, if you have any questions, we can ask the gentleman that's online. I'm not sure, I can't see if I found it, it's Richard or Dennis, but Dennis, who do we have from Avalonia with us?
Dennis Main.
Oh, hi, Dennis.
So I don't have any.
Nicole, Brett, how are you?
You don't have any questions?
Further, I would make a motion to send it to a town meeting.
Okay, so you're good with the way, the questions, the way they were answered?
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss after the motion.
Yeah. Okay.
My mic was off a little bit ago, Suzanne was like, Brett, you're. My mic was off a little bit ago. Suzanne was like, Brett, your mic's off.
All right. So Brett Mastroni has motioned and Nicole is second. So now we're open for discussion.
So, you know, I, uh, I voted to send it forward too. I have no hesitation about letting the town decide on something like this. Like I said, I, you know, when we made that motion, I, I mentioned that I, I hope they look into the horse riding on there because of it's the Kincaid property. And I think it's just a nice tribute to do it that way. Um, so that's my only holdout. Obviously, yeah, we don't want them to sell it and those things. But I, I hope they take that into account. I know, um, one of the gentlemen mentioned that since it wasn't donated, you know, sometimes when it's donated, they take the recommendations of the person donating and what should be there. But since it's not donated, they don't have to necessarily do that. But I hope they, they still look into those things. And, uh, I hope the, it's a nice addition to the town open space.
I, um, Dennis, I'd love to kind of hear, one of my questions is, is that if it goes on to a town meeting, do you, will Avalonia have at that point kind of an exact, um, proposal of all of the different parts of the property? What you will keep as open space, what you'll continue to use as trails or new trails? Will, will that be done and ready for the town meeting? Or would that only be done after you received the money and, and put the resources into that proposal?
You know, and thank you for having me. And, um, I do appreciate that we have Zoom available to us. There's not enough hours in the day. I apologize for not being there in person. But, um, one of the things I was coming home for was for feeding the horses. So I'll, I'll, I'll talk towards Brett's question on that in a minute too. But typically when we acquire something, uh, and we're in accredited land trust, like, you know, several hundred across the country, uh, one of only three in New London County, um, along with Salem and Colchester, who are actually working on merging into Avalonia. But one of the things we do is follow their guidelines, which really tell us that we should have a management plan in place within 12 months. And it's hard to put a management plan before you actually own it. Because there are going to be things, you know, you're going to do habitat studies, you're going to do a forestry plan, et cetera. So it's typical, you know, that we quote have to have a management plan in within 12 months. But we have a general good sense going in because that, a lot of that detail, which I believe we've shared with you, um, folks at the town level, the Conservation Commission, et cetera. We put in an application to the state open space funding, um, group. And a lot of that detail is in there. For example, those trails that you see, um, we already had a correction from deep. They came back to us, um, because our GIS person had put the proposed parking internal to the lot. And they've really gone towards, and you've seen it with our preserves, where we've put in accessible parking areas now, including handicap parking, et cetera. So they really wanted to have us, um, move that. So there were two maps that you probably saw, one had a little squiggle on it that I think one of the neighbors was concerned that that squiggle kind of indicated we were over his property line. Um, and, and obviously we'll have an A2, so that'll be clarified. But that parking lot after deep got the application was moved down to Babcock. So it was accessible from the street. People could see it, you know, it would be open, et cetera. So, so a lot of those things, they are in place, but a final management plan comes later. And on the horses question, that's been something that we've been, you know, certainly a concern of mine. I lived in Basra and we just put, uh, uh, the sample that we sent you of the easement was for our most recent easement that we had, uh, was here in Basra. Um, and next door to me, we have this Maple's Farm Park. We put in mountain biking trails, horse trails, running trails and pedestrian, all in the same parcel. They all coexist. That's been in there for more than a decade. We used deep funds for it and we were one of the first ones that had the actual passive recreation, sort of unknown quantity identified. Um, and all of those things, you know, basically you, you can't have structures such as a ball field, a soccer field. Those kinds of things would not come under it. Uh, but certainly horseback riding is one. Um, and I know we put it in at least three of our six Oswas that we rewarded last year that specifically equestrian was one of the things that we were aiming to have on our preserves. I see no reason why, you know, we have it, I think next door at Henny already. Um, and one of our other preserves right that abuts it. Um, so I, and I see no reason, you know, particularly, um, as far as the question about donations versus the other, yes, when you get a donation, there are, could be deed restrictions that the donor is putting in, where it's not involving state funding. When you get the state funding, then, you know, everything's clean, the state's, it's the primary source. They're the primary deed restriction. And they just basically have a requirement that you have it open for passive recreation to the extent that it doesn't negatively impact conservation values. You know, so if you had a, I don't know, spade foot toes or something in a marshy area, you obviously you're not going to want people walking through or taking dogs through or horses through, something that's a fragile habitat like that. So you're balancing those things. Um, and that's where the management plan kind of dictates, you know, if we go in there and find some, you know, particular habitat that hey, and hunting is another one. I'm missing the Board of Selectmen in Basra tonight, where they are introducing an ordinance that is similar to Legerd, which was promulgated based on a spray ordinance, which allows hunting. Um, and because we've had, you know, there is an issue with, uh, over brows by dairy. We saw it down at, um, Bluff Point years ago, where they were emaciated and the, you know, the understory was stripped, et cetera. So there needs to be some balance. So one of the things we found in, um, Legerd just transferred over 94 acres, the Founder's Preserve, which has a bow hunting ordinance, um, where they allow bow hunting on that and a town property, um, where we're collaboratively doing that. So, you know, that would be, you know, if you have particular people who, and I know Gary allows hunting on there right now. You know, so that may be a consideration. Because I don't, you know, I don't think you would want us to be continuing to put more and more. And basically it just becomes a protection zone for no hunting, for example. Um, you know, and then you're not keeping nature in balance, uh, with the number of deer, et cetera. So that's, that, that's some of the examples in the, in the passive recreation area.
Thank you, Dennis.
Uh, Dennis, would you have, if we are to move this to the town meeting, which we have one plan, tentatively plan, we haven't called it yet for November 24th, uh, would we have Avalonia representation there for a presentation? A lot of the people that'll be at that meeting that evening, uh, will have not heard any of this so far. It's basically the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and the, the handful of people have been in those rooms at those, at those meetings. So.
Sure. Um, and I, and I don't think you were on the council the last time we had a presentation like this. But, um, when Bob Ergo was in, but unfortunately I think it was also budget night that night. And I remember being there till 11 o'clock, um, you know, till the end of that. So yes, um, you know, we would have somebody there very definitely and happy to answer any questions and explain it. And I hope I've answered Nicole and Brett's questions on that. And again, we're a 501(c)(3), we try to be very open and transparent. Um, certainly been in town since the founding.
Would correct to say that this land will not be sold, correct?
Absolutely not. Um, you know, even if we as an organization, for whatever reason, if I went to C3s, can theoretically go out of operation, but we've been here for 57 years. You know, and you're one of the four towns that we were, uh, first char, as a regional land trust, Legerd, Groton, Stonington, North Stonington, that we started in, um. But if this, the easement, and that's a sample of, of what the standard easement is from deep that I forwarded you, um, that would go on basically in favor of the state of Connecticut, um, in perpetuity forever. So, um, even if we were to go out of business, the successor land trust or, you know, whether it was municipality or however, you know, there is a process of how land, um, 501(c)(3) s go out of business. We certainly don't think we will. We think, you know, we've got sound finances, we've got great properties. We have over 1,200 acres in North Stonington. Um, you know, and I think we're serving the public. I think certainly folks have been happy with our preserves. And we're certainly protecting a lot of good habitat down there.
So I have a question that was actually just messaged to me because they wanted to raise their hand and they couldn't. Will the town have visibility into the purchase and sale agreement prior to the town meeting? Particularly can it be, I mean, you just answered this kind of, but particularly can it be resold or are there restrictions against that? But it was basically about the town visibility to the purchase and sale.
No, I think we've been very open about the purchase and sale. We've already got a price on it. We've got a praise, two appraisals, a yellow book and a, um, a yellow book review. Uh, the price is 400,000. The state has, um, given us a grant for 300,000. And you got the benefit of, you know, being under the distressed municipality rules of getting a 75% grant from the state. Um, and we're asking for 75 from the town and we would be raising the additional 25 plus closing costs, et cetera, and paying for surveys. But sure, I'd be happy to, you know, we're going to be sharing a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, uh, with the state of Connecticut. Certainly happy to share it with, with your board as well.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate all the answers, Dennis.
Oh, anytime. That's, you know.
Other question? Did you want to say something, Ann? Uh, you have to cut up to the microphone if you do.
Uh, we can, we can repeat it if you, if that's easier.
You want, can you hand it to her? We'll, we'll reach that far. Uh, Dennis, I hope you didn't say anything that wasn't right because Ann Oxlough's in the room. So.
No, no. 22 years as our president, 10 years as secretary, and you know, she's been there for, for at least five decades. So. Ann, did I, did I do it right?
1974, I believe. Ann Oxlough from Northstone, uh, Northwest Corner Road, uh, already my connection to Avalonia has been mentioned. I have not talked to anybody about this. I should have talked to some of the people to, to know what you were doing. And I neglected to do that. Okay. Um, but I did have questions and, um, certainly I think horse, and that's just sort of more personal than an Avalonia voice, I think. But anyway, um, I think horses are fine. It means that the parking lot on Babcock Road is going to have to be big enough to accommodate a horse, a, a vehicle with a horse trailer attached, not our normal size. So it might be bigger. Um, I noticed in, in one parking lot, we expanded on, uh, Miller Road, the tri-town one, they put a little patch in that was ADA. So the parking lot is gravel, except there's a little black patch in the corner and it's finer stuff, easier to work on, even though the trails aren't necessarily ADA. Um, I don't know if bikes have been discussed. I would prefer not bikes. I don't know if there's discussed bikes or not. I just think they're a little tough on the trail and on the environment we are, um, supposed to be protecting. As Dennis mentioned, the habitat and make it still attractive for the animals that live there. Um, hunting, I would hope not. I know there's a couple of properties we have where we've inherited hunting on it. But I think unless it's necessary, like on, on the bluff point to control the vegetation or the habitat, that, that's a limited thing. Um, oh, and I certainly thank you all for, for considering this in a positive way. Um, I've noticed on one of our signs, we, we have a wonderful new sign up at tri-town, which lists the donors. So I would think we would list the town of, of North Stonington as, as part of who made this possible. And so that's all I, I, I think I have to say. I, I, I think this is terrific and I thank you so much. I think that's all.
Thank you, Ann. Dennis, on the hunting question, are there any properties in North Stonington now that own Avalonia that have hunting on them?
We don't have any properties in North Stonington that have hunting. I think the only one we have is, um, Sheets was the name I was thinking of. Is.
We have, apparently we have the Founder's.
Which is a reservoir property or something and that already had hunting on it. Is that right?
A Founder's Preserve in Legerd is the only one and that has an ordinance, um, by which we do it.
That's a new one on the list.
That's Legerd, 93 acres that we closely, and then, uh, again, led, uh, Basra is work. They were, Board of Selectmen was considering that same ordinance, um, uh, for that. But you know, it is, it is something that we have to consider. It was even, uh, a recent Eric Hansen, who was a noted forester and habitat study person, did a study on 272 acre and that was one of his comments was that we really need to consider and work with the indigenous people, et cetera, too, perhaps, towards having some sort of deer control because there was such heavy browse there, um, that it was negatively impacting the environment.
Okay. I actually have one more.
So that's, that's, you know, it's, it's a work in progress.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brett.
I just have one more question. I just thought about, um, now we have this listed as the Kincaid property discussion, but since it's not a donation from the property owner, will it still retain the Kincaid name as like a Kincaid preserve or something like that? I don't know if we've ever talked about that.
Yeah. One of the, one of the, um, aspects of, of doing a transaction with a land trust is that it usually takes time and a lot of time. And one of the considerations on the naming is because it does take time, you're doing an appraisal two years ago. You know, by the time you get done through all of the processes, that when they do a reappraisal as of the date of the deed changing hands, there's usually a significant increase in value. You know, prices generally haven't ever, you know, I mean, there's been times when they might've turned down, but generally it's going up. So there is a significant donor, um, a donation there from the tax aspect of the 82, 83 form that's filled out, et cetera. Um, so usually, and again, you know, you, you, folks are putting it into conservation. They're providing a lot of, uh, benefit, um, that usually deference is given to the, uh, the sellers with the naming of it.
But I think.
So does that.
I tend to put the person, the donors or whoever owned it, put their name on, except the one I did, because I didn't want my name on it. It's a hard enough name to live with. Without, so I chose Deer Run, which is what the place used to be.
Oh, so Dennis, do you think this will be named after the Kincaid?
You know, unless there was any, whether, again, it would be Gary's choice. If Gary, uh, had an interest, if he didn't want it named, we wouldn't, you know, obviously name it in opposition to the family's desires. But, you know.
But if he did, it would probably be honored. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. Exactly. I mean, we've done that in so many others, you know. We, we, we still call Deer Run, uh, one, two, three, four and five Ann Oxlough's property, but.
You can name the trail, we said, but don't put it out in the road.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah. You, you did see her picture in, uh, yes, today's The Buzz, uh, of Ann standing up, nailing the sign up on the, did everybody see that?
Oh, no, I, I didn't.
It was in the Westerly Sun. It was in the New London Day, Under the Buzz. I think on the, it might've been a star, because the 19th, um, but it's online.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Hearing done. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Holders in favor of the, of sending this to the town meeting and putting it on the town meeting call, uh, scheduled for November 24th. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Dennis, it's going to the town meeting. It'll be, uh, 6:30 on November 24th. Uh, special meaning of the Board of Selectmen to call the meeting probably on the 12th of November, um, because of the timeframe that we need. But you can pretty much lock that in at 6:30 on November 24th. And I can send you or you can ask me. I'll give you a copy of the call once it's approved. You can see where you are in the, uh, in the line of fire. Okay?
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Appreciate it.
Thanks to three of you very much.
All right. Great. And thank you, Ann, too, for getting up and speaking. I appreciate it. All right. So we're going to move along then. Um, Sarak, so, um, it's funny, we just had this conversation, right? We just had a resident.
What about eight?
Oh, did I skip something?
Appropriation request, pay down debt.
Oh, of course. So we sometimes, sometimes we seem like we're repeating things. And, um, so we approved this, it was an appropriation, we approved it. What we approved was to go to the, the Board of Finance asked us to come up with, uh, the best ways to take the overage from the end design in front of how to apply it to short-term debt. So we as a board came up with this plan that totaled 672,000, 672,224 dollars. And we sent it to the Board of Finance. And we sent it to the Board of Finance, saying this is what we'd like to see. The Board of Finance then said, okay, we agree, we voted, they voted yes. That's great. But now it has to go to a town meeting. It can't go to a town meeting without an appropriation, especially because of the the dollar value. So now we have to kind of prove it again as an appropriation, for me to go back to the Board of Finance and request these funds so they can go to Board of Town Meeting. And I can't put this on the call unless we go through that process. So I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to approve this, which we've already approved as a non-appropriation, to approve it again, and I can take it to the Board of Finance on the November fifth meeting and ask them to approve it as an appropriation. Now I can put it on the town call to that.
I'll make a I'll make a motion to move a total appropriation request of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars to a town.
Board of Finance.
Board of Finance meeting for approval to move it to the town meeting on November twenty-fourth to pay down debt as per the request of the Board of Finance.
I'll second.
Great. Okay, discussion?
So I think with with Nicole's motion, it won't even have to come back for you to put on the town meeting, right? You'll be able to just go, if the Board of Finance approves, because she put that in that.
We could, but since I'm going to have a call, we're going to have to approve the call.
Okay.
And it's going to be on the call is one of the questions. So we'll be approving the call and the entire call unless there's something on that you guys don't want on the call that we have to take it off, but.
All right, perfect.
All right, so the, what I've tried to do lately with the with these appropriations is try to have them more information on the appropriation rather than just the six, seven, two, two twenty-five, trying to give it, so if anybody picks us up, they know exactly what we were doing with the money. You'll see that more and more as they do these appropriately, get used to doing these things, so. Yeah, I, we've done this already. It's already been approved by both boards and I would just approve again officially. So if we're all in favor, I would say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I will send this to the, I have not sent a copy of this to the Board of Finance until it was approved, so I'll send a copy tomorrow and ask to be on their next meeting. Thank you. What number are we on now, Nicole?
We are on none. Now you can talk about SREC.
So a gentleman came in my office. First, he came to the Council of Governments meeting and he got introduced to all the the twenty-two cities and towns that are part of the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. And he identified himself as the new chairperson or director of SREC. It's a group out of knowledge, it's been around for a while. And what they're trying to do is raise more awareness for opioid awareness, prevention, recovery, suicide. And he came and spent some time with me and I guess he was going to all twenty-two towns. He came into me and says, so is there any way that we could work with the town of North Stonington? And I said, well, what I'd like you to do, if you wanted to, is put some sort of a proposal together. And I have, I know I have opioid funds, which he knew because, you know, that word's out there. And I gave you a copy of how much is in that funding today. It's a little fifty thousand. And when it comes to opioid funding, we've done very little. I have approached Ledge Light about it. We gave five thousand dollars to Reliance Health out of knowledge about two years ago. Last year, we, a resident was in need of some counseling and we did that. That was only a thousand dollars and we can only use opioid funds for education, recovery, counseling, that type of thing. I mean, we can buy knock-in, but we don't need that much knock-in. It's not that expensive. And the fire company in the, the M S R D bought their own knock-in. So he did send us a presentation. You have a copy of, they're looking for a five thousand dollar donation. We do not have to approve this this evening. But he sent me this packet, sent, and Jim Odom wanted him to look at, he sent us that that ask and what they would do for that ask. I told him, rather than put this in the budget, rather than, because again, why do we want to keep adding five oh one C threes to our budget? Because he's asking for money that's in a separate account that we can't spend, except for those reasons I just described. This is the perfect place and we have been trying to give this money away, but give it not frivolously, give it away to people who really need it. And this is one of those cases where I think they qualify. So again, I just wanted to bring it to your attention this evening. There's, they're having a breakfast meeting tomorrow morning, but I can't go to it. I've got too much on my agenda already, so. It's right, they're right at Dodds Stadium, the entrance to Dodds Stadium, the commercial park, they're right across the street from that. But I just think after hearing him speak at the Council of Governments and how well he was received, having him come to our, my office and speak again, coming back to us with this plan, and let me, Nicole, if you can get Jen, I know she's busy, get Ledge Light. As long as it's helping people in our town, I think it's it's a good thing. I don't want to give something to, you know, give it to Reliance Health and they were, they were supposed to do some things in town. I know what they did and what they didn't do, but they never came back after that. So, but I would think in this case, I'd want to have some sort of a a report on, not just tell me what you're going to do, but then a report back to us on what you did do before you ask again. That's where I am with it. I will tell you, we can discuss it. Again, we don't have to, I know Brett and I agree with him most times on this, but I don't think there's any reason to fast forward something when we have time. But if you, being at your last meeting, if you felt strongly one way or the other, I would give you that opportunity, Brett. But if you didn't and you say, you know what, I think the board should look at this later on, I'd be glad to do that also.
So we have, what was the total in that account now? Is that fifty thousand? Six ninety-one?
Right, fifty thousand, six ninety-one on opioid.
So just for the public or anyone out there that doesn't understand what they provide, I just want to read, so what they'd like to do is community presentations for residents, schools and service providers on opioid prevention. Public screening of documentary film on opioid crisis followed by community discussion with experts and individuals with lived experiences. They'd also distribute disposal bag, drug disposal bags and lock boxes for medications across the town. So all these things are are good, right? We need those things. And I like that there's an action plan of what they do for our community compared to, oh, we'll do some seminars, we'll get out there. So I'm in favor of moving some of that that forward, if those are what they will do in our community. And then the follow-up, nice to see them come back after it's done and say, hey, this is how many people participated. This was great because what I've heard about some of the last ones is two people showed up or because they didn't do the advertising ahead of time to get the word out. But talking to the school over the years, too, it'd be nice for that, the balance of this, and I know they get some money for different things, too, is to talk to them about what they see some of the needs for, for the dependency and what this money can be used for, and maybe some joint collaboration because because we know it all affects kids, it affects parents, it affects members of our community that we don't know about that are that are struggling. So I think having that discussion, especially with the administration of the high school, to, how do we use the rest of the funds to make the biggest impact or at least come up with a plan that we're working on this together or as a problem for the community compared to just throwing stuff at the wall every now and then because we have the money and hey, this might work here, this will work here, come with a plan. And maybe that's when, you know, with the social services person, if we're moving forward in that direction, this is something we get insight from that person from. Because you would think that person dives into this kind of stuff and knows what resources to send. So before we keep spending the money, I think we should have those discussions as a community of, okay, before we spend it down to nothing, let's look at if we're having social services, is that part of this? And talk to the school on how we can best hit the biggest chunk of our community and actually make an impact.
So two points you just mentioned, one is, yeah, definitely, I think I should get together with Kristen and say, you know, how can we do this town, but also school, some sort of a joint effort? And I agree, that's a great idea. I think it'd be probably better participation if we included the school and the parents of the school kids in it. And then secondly, the second thing you said, and it was brought up by one owner, I believe, is when we do have a director on social services, they'll go a long way into vetting out some of these budget five oh one C threes. What, who does what? I mean, maybe we don't have the best one. We try, our five oh one C threes, we've always tried to be one per category, right? We don't need three people doing the same thing. And if you look at our list of who we give to, it's pretty much that. We, you know, always home is different than safe futures, who's different than pork, maywood and so on. So I think that directors would say, you know, we really, we do this with TVCA, but there's another group that is better than TVCA does. And they would know because that's what they do. So, and they would be able to say this, like SREC can say, I think this is worth the budget to put on the budget or not. On this particular case, I'm not asking to add these people to the budget because we have the opioid funds and why go through that if we don't have to and make it part of the budget each year? But the, I wouldn't mind if everything works out well and they come back with a report, as you said, Brett, and show us what you've done and they want to ask again. I mean, we're going to keep getting money into that fund as we have settlements with these different pharmaceutical companies. But, yeah, so that's where we are with it. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, let you know it was out there. We don't usually get asked for people for opioid funding. This happened to come through and I just wanted to bring it to you.
One last thing. What exactly are the parameters about what it can be spent for? Can this be used to help kick off the social services position?
I don't know that.
It might be something to look into because that might give us, obviously, we can't depend on this for budgeting based on what the dollar values are, but it might help us ease into that position and you like, because these companies we donate to, to utilize it, yes, they're running these things, but it's helping pay for the staff members to do that. So it might be something to look into for that, the balance or, hey, can we use part of it for those?
So I can, I'm sure I can have Suzanne contact the state and ask that question, like, can you give me a printout of everything we can do with this money? And is this, is this something we could do as we try to set up the social services department?
So, yeah, so I would love Suzanne to take a look at what the definition is. SREC says that they are, they deal with topics of substance abuse, gambling, mental health promotion. So if this is, if they're just asking for five thousand and they are going to these three things, the community presentation, the dissemination of the drug disposal bags and the lock boxes and the public screening of that documentary. I, I am fine voting on that today. We have fifty thousand and change in there now. I think that it still leaves us a lot to talk about and use. And I would love to know if any kind of mental health promotion can be, that fifty thousand and change can be used for that. You could absolutely link mental health issues to substance abuse. So I don't think that that's a big leap. So just would love to know the answer to that, but I'm, I'm actually fine. In fact, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve five thousand dollars of our opioid money to give to SREC for the express intent of those three things to be done in town.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay, so what I'll do tomorrow, we approve this in a second. I'll get ahold of Mark Irons, who's a gentleman came to my room. I don't know, I can't go to his breakfast tomorrow, but the good news is we would approve this and then and I would just say that the board would like to see after it's done, a report and he might meet me again, maybe with the school representation, to see how we can do a joint event.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so then all in favor of approving the five thousand dollars to go to SREC, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Nice thing, too, this is not taxpayer dollars per se, it's coming from Big Pharma, so we're not spending taxpayer dollars to do this. Thank you. What number are we on now, Nicole?
We're on number ten. The five year, we're on number ten, but it's the five year capital.
Yeah, so, so we have the five-year plan. This is according to the budget calendar, this is where we, we first glanced at this last time. You have a copy, I believe, with the with the appropriations taking out, taken out of it. And you see what it looks like. And I think it's going to be very important that when we go to the town and we talk about the appropriations, that we say that we have a five, a twenty and a thirty-year plan. And the only way you can make this work is you don't move things up. Just because you're paying for a truck doesn't mean you're going to buy another one and move it up. Everything has to stay where it belongs. It's why we thought out that plan to begin with. So if the truck doesn't come to year four, that's when it comes. You can't move it up just because we're paying one off. So everything in the highway, transfer station capital, slugman capital, revow capital and and that's where, that's where we were at the last time we were still there. What's been added is the school capital and there's three things were added. Outdoor track construction of eight hundred thousand dollars, Kubota plow tractor at seventy-two thousand dollars and what was that third? Yeah, there is floor machine, twenty-four thousand dollars. I did have a conversation with Alan. The floor machine that they had, they want to replace is up at the highway department and it's beyond repair. I said, of these three things, Alan, if you were in charge of maintaining these items, all these two things, the Kubota tractor, said, do they actually need that particular tractor? Do they need the floor machine? He said to me that he thought the floor machine made sense because when he hasn't ever worked again, so he spent a lot of money to repair it. He wasn't sure that the tractor has specked out.
The loader, the loader.
Loader has its, well, it's called a tractor on there.
And here, where it's a loader.
He wasn't sure that that's exactly the piece of equipment they needed. Nor was he sure he needed it. They needed it this year. And then I'll let you discuss the track construction, however you want to discuss it.
So I, looking through this and listening to the meetings, I, I'm in favor of having the floor machine in here. Knowing the challenges they have, maybe they can move, maybe the old one that is working into this building or so, or I guess they can also transport it or drive it is what Alan was saying. So I am in favor of that. I'm not in favor keeping the outdoor track here. Like I said at the last meeting, if they want a, a list for for when we get, I'm drawing a blank.
Additional steep grant?
An additional steep grant, then that could be in in their want list to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen for the steep grant. But I can't see sending this capital plan to, to the town with, with that in it. It seems a little extreme. And then the the plow slash loader that they want. Basically, what they're saying is they would like to utilize it for plowing the sidewalks. I don't know if that makes total sense, but if Alan looks into it more, maybe you add that for a future year, but I don't think for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that makes sense. And seeing that they look, need a gator as well the following year, maybe they look at that with the plow attachments to do sidewalks. They're the perfect vehicle to do sidewalks and then they get double U out of it compared to a smaller front end loader.
We just, you can just put the plow on, take it off, type of thing.
Yes, you drop it, they're heated. You saw quite a few of them in the, well, you didn't, but in the holiday, in the fright and lights parade, there were, there were a few in some. We're landscapers that utilize that in winter for plowing sidewalks. So I would look at that. So I would be in favor of this plan moving forward with just the floor machine for this year.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't disagree at all. I would love to have Alan investigate that, the plow tractor more and vet out Brett's idea of adding it to the gator. I, yeah, when, when we have to think about the need to haves versus the nice to haves, I think the outdoor track, although it would be very, very nice and a really nice addition to the fields, I do think that it's a perfect steep grant. Opportunity, so I agree with everything that Brett just said.
Especially if we're getting eighty percent reimbursement.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, you could do it, you could do probably a better than eight hundred thousand dollar track, get eighty percent back, so.
Yeah. I mean, that's a huge savings if we did it that way compared to putting in the capital plan like this.
The other thing I'd like to know too, Brett, is I'd love to see the longevity of our track team. Is that going to stay consistent? I know there's been years where they've had to talk a student into joining the cross-country teams just so they I know there's been years where they've had to talk a student into joining the cross country teams just so they had the minimum of five. I think that happened, I think Laura Swanson was the fifth one that had to be talked in the running one year, just so they could have a team. So sometimes teams get popular, sometimes they don't. Sometimes a lot of kids want to play with us, sometimes they don't. I think we went from being in our own team. First we, we, we were St. Burns and we're our own and we went back to St. Burns and we're in our own. I think it's sometimes it's, um, things get popular and I don't, I would hate to, and right now we have a ton of kids running track. But will we have a ton of kids running track five years from now? I know it's always say, it's always good to have, you know, see seniors can walk around it and townspeople can walk around it. But that's an awful lot of money to spend on a track if it's just going to be used by residents occasionally to walk around it. So I, I. I think a steep rent would buy us some time to see how the track team keeps going. Uh, right now there's a big interest in it, but you don't know if that will always be there. We, we, being a small school. You know, we can only have so many athletes and we have a lot of our children now played three different sports just so we can have teams. And you wonder if there's more train playing track, doing track, outdoor track, which is in the spring. Are we going to have trouble fielding a baseball team or a softball team eventually? So if it is, it is, but. Yeah. For years we filled those teams and now you wonder, you know, how many kids, we have to co-op with another school maybe to have a track team. So it's a lot of questions. Track seems great right now and it's a lot of interest. And, you know, when there's a lot of interest, you say, okay, let's build a track. Let's, let's keep going with this, but, um, will the interest still be there in three or four years? That's my only question.
I, I agree. It makes perfect sense. One other thing about the track, the tractor, front, front end loader. If it is something that's needed to a certain extent, just for use of the school, it seems maybe extreme, but maybe if. Alan works with them about, okay, how do we handle the sidewalks? How do we do those things? And it's a, a joint purchase now that we're maintaining so many different buildings. And if that falls under the highway, it might make sense in the, in the next few years. But I, I think exclusively for the school, it, it, it doesn't, for just plowing, there was no other. Their needs written in that letter other than plowing sidewalks.
No, I agree. As, as we, we put more and more twine to how the school does things, uh, with maintenance. And I can see somewhere down the road, well, after I'm gone probably, maybe Nicole will be the first like, who knows? But, uh, somewhere in, in the future, I can see us handling pretty much all the equipment in town.
Yeah.
Um, we might have to do a, some sort of addition to the highway department's garage and, and put lifts in there and things like that. But, um, I know Colchester is a much bigger town, but when I went there to pick up the ladder truck that time. They had five mechanics and they had buses and police cars and fire trucks and they had everything in that building. We'll probably never get to that extent, but, um, you never know. So it's, I think it's a, it's the start of something that could be much bigger down the road. And, uh, and why not look at that? And, and the perfect example was the buses for the senior center. They need to have buses. We got them buses and we found they sat there 355 days a year. So the school needed buses. Now we get the best of both worlds. I think that's kind of what you're saying with the, with the loader, correct?
Yeah. And I mean, and I, I look at the old Kubota that sits there out in the, on the side of the building for the majority of the time. If it's a town asset, you know, it's covered. It's when it's not in use. There, there's a lot of things and they're properly maintained. If one person is tracking all use of this, and I, I think we voted. Few months ago or so for a, a vehicle maintenance program to, to make sure. We, we put parts in and all that stuff of what's needed. So this makes perfect sense that we kind of move in that direction of every. Everything being monitored by the highway garage of, of a major, um, piece of equipment.
And maybe adopting a piece of equipment at a time as we buy one, maybe it goes, falls into that category.
Yeah.
Eventually everything kind of moves over, but I'm not trying to take the responsibility away from the school. But I think it's better to have one, one, everything in one year. So we know what's going on and we do have that software that they are using. So it makes sense.
Um, Bob, did they clarify, um, the, uh, it's not for, um, 26, 27, it's 28, 29. The 75,000 for the LED electronic sign for messages. Is that to replace the one outside of 298 right now?
I think that is, I'm not sure you'd have to step that, I was in part of that discussion.
I thought it was for a new one across.
But, but I think it's for the other side of the road and this one would disappear, I think.
Yeah.
This one came into play when, um. Mister, what was his name? Yeah, I went to, uh, yeah, I went to Woodstock Academy. Who?
Sanford.
Sanford, yeah. Mr. Sanford wanted that sign. That's how long we've had it. It is integrated. We went to get pots for it to get it working again. It was, it was not easy to do that. So it's way past its prime. I see the one that, have you ever seen the one that Griswold High School has? They have a beautiful sign out front that tells you what the weather is. And then it flips over to what the play, you know, what the drama club's doing and it flips again to what the football team's doing. It just keeps moving.
Similar to the press in, I think, fire department. If you're going to Mohegan Sun on 2A, you see it on the corner. They got it. They got to donate it to them, but they're bright. And I, I, I do find value in those. I, so I think eventually across the street, even if it's across the street and the town utilizes for meetings, things like that. There's definitely a benefit to it. Um, but that's in 28, 29. Maybe they want to think about moving that one sooner to get the messages out. I'm not sure, but.
Derek, and this isn't something we have to vote on this evening. I just want to get some feedback on what we thought as a group. So we pretty much all in step when we say the track at this point, maybe be better served that wait for a steep grant for that. We want to have Alan vet out the, um, the loader slash tractor. And maybe I think Brett's idea of possibly teaming up with the. Gator next year with a plow, like maybe that would make sense. And I think we all kind of agree that, uh, the floor machine makes sense because they have two, but the third one right now is down for the count. It's not going to come back. And maybe we take the oldest one, move it here and give them a new one to the other side of the street. So.
Is this something you want to vote on with that out of there?
Yeah, I. Well, I think we could, we could, but I think that, I'm not sure I want to keep the. Well, do you want to take the, are we voting to take the loader off it at this point then?
Yeah, I would vote to take the loader in the track off it for this year.
And leave the.
Even without Alan, um. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in favor of that as well.
Okay. And so I don't mind if there's a motion you want to vote on.
I'll make a motion to approve the five year capital like this by removing the outdoor track. Instruction and the Kubota plow for now. And leaving in the floor machine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a first, uh, motion.
We're not, we're not approving the 26, 27 as, as is with just those edits. Are we going to continue to talk about the other things?
Well, there's, well, we could. I mean, we don't have to approve this this evening because I don't have to take this to the, to, to the, uh, the, um, board of finance for quite a while.
Okay.
But it just, it's as we, well, we can go through this, this, the rest of the stuff that's on here, there's nothing new. Everything is on here to carry over from last year.
And, and I think that was our purpose, especially I will say on our part, the municipal part is. To try to keep this as our guidebook of what we are doing and not vary from it. So I do worry about saying, doing something, then completely changing from what we voted and presented.
I just wanted to clarify whether it was going as is with just the two things. I, I'm.
Yeah, I, good point. But I would tell you that there's, nothing's been added, but things have come off. So the 1.309 million that's on here, if you take 800,000 out of that and 72,000 out of that. Um, we're well below last year's, um, and we should be if we're taking all that money out.
Only reason I talked about voting on it to approve and maybe send that along to the board of finances. Because now we're voting on those other appropriations take coming off so that they can see what we voted on as our five year capital.
But we're voting on it with those off. So should, can we do that before we've taken them off before?
Yeah, because it, it's, this isn't approved by the town or anything. This is how we'd like to see it. So then they see the five year capital with those appropriations like they've asked for. And we could go down as like a preliminary five year capital plan based on the ask of. Uh, of the board of finance of what to prepay.
Um, is there any reporting Stephanie, I have to do back to the board of Ed to say that of their three items, one's living and two aren't.
I don't know if there's anything you have to do, but I think it would be a nice way to close the.
I could send Troy an email to say, we wrote down this as a preliminary plan and, uh, this is what we, we were thinking of the three items and one stuck and why the other two didn't. We could do that. I'll go, we can do that.
Do we, I just have one, uh, do we have any idea if the board of finance is going to come back with an additional ask? Once more money goes back into the undesigned to bring it down below the percentage. Do we think that we're going to have to go back to the dry boarding? But, and, and spend down any more debt?
I think there's so many things that are out there between the library and other things that are out there that they're going to have to consider down the road. I don't see them doing that anytime soon.
But we won't be over our, um. Our policy as far as the percentage that we have in the undesigned.
We, we.
Once other monies go back into it.
So not at this audit, this order. That will tell us how much money, leftover money from the budget is going to go back. So this will be completed. They really won't have another number to the next audit.
Okay.
They'll have the undesigned fund that we keep like that, that chart. Um, but they, they won't have an official number until after the audit.
Okay.
I think I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
To approve this as a preliminary five year capital plan by removing the outdoor track construction, the Kubota plow. Keeping in the floor machine as our preliminary five year capital plan. Based on the ask of the board of finance to come up with, um, prepayments on our capital plan. As you're going forward with appropriation. So then they can see both things, capital plan, the appropriations as we're looking for. That's my entire motion.
God bless Suzanne.
Whoever's writing that up tomorrow, I appreciate. Get it.
I will second that thesis.
That'll be, that'll be Jen.
I do like, I do like the adding the word preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because at any time we can amend it, but.
Yeah. So then I can present to them on the fifth, here's your appropriations, what the five year plan looks like today, preliminary plan looks like today with that. That taken out of it.
Yeah.
Okay. I can do that. Okay. Did you second his motion as?
I did second.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
No, I just know I'm going to get a text from Jen tomorrow thanking, thanking me for that long.
She'll probably text you and say, can you repeat it? All right. So, um, all in favor of proving this preliminary, preliminary five year capital plan. And I will send a superintendent an email tomorrow, just letting him know how it went and he'd be invite him to watch the meeting if he'd like to hear the discussion. So. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Donation policy. So let's talk a little bit about, I think we talked about this at the last meeting. So we have a potential donation policy, but I'm, I've read through this a number of times. And the piece we really don't have in here is the piece that we addressed recently. And I don't see where it says anything about an, a person that's doing like a, like it did a camp. Who then wanted to turn the money over to a, a, um, an organization or in this case it was the booster club. The reason I hesitated on the last time is because it was, we had to write four different, five different checks. Um, we had to write one to the, the guy who was doing the project, one to was the person who was helping him do the project, two other people that were helping. And then the third one was the, uh, school athletic, um. Um, school come for basketball. So we're not in the business to just say, okay, you know, give me a list of five, we're going to keep writing checks for you. I would have been happy if he would have said, you know, put the whole, give the whole thing to, like you did the year before, give the whole thing to the boosters or whoever it was. So I would be fine with that, but how do we want to, you know? And we, we don't, this is, I just want a discussion. How do we want to word that? How? If you've read the policy, I don't see anything in here that covers what we just addressed. So I'm asking both Brett and Nicole here. Um, is there a way, what would you like to see? Do you want to say that we don't allow it at all? Do, do you like to say we'll do it? If you donate it to one organization, um.
Personally, I. I don't, I don't see that being the norm. So I don't mind that we'd have to write four checks now that, and I'll say that. Because now we. Charge an administration fee on those programs. So if you asked me last year. When we didn't charge the, the percent we charge now. Then I, I, I would understand and, and I think I would side with you saying, okay, we're writing multiple checks that cost us time, money. But we kind of are accounting for some of that money now by charging the administration fee. And I think. It allows a benefit to a, an organization within our, especially within our community. That it, it, it's a good deed. The, the person's doing it to not only volunteer his time basically, but. For this one, it was to give back to the, our own school athletic program. I would hate to make a rule that, that dissuades that or changes that. If you want to make it that you have to vote on each time it comes up. That could be a little dicey, but I, I understand that. But to, to, to not allow it because somebody wants to do it. For multiple group, because say there's three people helping, right? We still have to write, we still write three checks.
Not in this case, it would have been one.
But not necessarily. There's been times where the, uh, and I've signed the checks that they have, I think volleyball last year or two years ago. They didn't donate any of it, but we had to make out three checks to three different individuals that were helping with that program. So. That kind of changes the argument of we don't want to write multiple checks and still donate.
So our auditor and our, and our, um. Attorney both waited and say, no, we should just give the check to the person, let him send the checks out. It's much cleaner. And then again, this is accounting people talking about this, right? So. So your order is saying, no, we, we think you should just give the check to the coach, let him send it out as needed. Uh, and the, uh, the attorney basically said the same thing.
I thought the attorney wrote differently that.
No, last year the attorney said it would not to do it. He ordered the last year, said, yeah, I don't see where there's a problem, but that was last year's order, the king, king. We asked the order and he said, and Suzanne can explain this. They said, uh, it's, it's, we'd rather you just give it to the coach and let him send the check out. Um, and basically say he gets $5,000 and he wants to send the check to the, he doesn't want to pay that. He doesn't feel like he needs to pay the taxes. Because now he's sending the money back to somebody else. So why should he have to pay the taxes? So you, you know, oh, no good, he goes unpunishable without saying. And so, but why couldn't he say, okay, I'm going to keep $500 for myself to cover my taxes. I'll put 4,500 in the pocket of the booster group.
Because it's. It's depleting the amount of the donation to the group. Um, and I think that I know there was a, an issue, a time when the, there was a drama program and they wanted to donate part, part of the, the proceeds back to the drama. Group at the school. I just think the more money that we can utilize or have. These organizations utilize that are donated to them, we should help that process compared to hinder it. Whether you want to make a rule about how many checks to write that. That's, that could be a discussion too, but I think if we're trying to. Really help the organizations within our community, why? I put something in place that restricts it. I, I, I think seeing the good deed that's being done. I, I feel like we go against that by doing this and it, it doesn't hurt the community other than the town, other than a little extra work on our part. So we don't need time all the time to different things.
I guess I'm in the middle. I don't. I don't mind the one check, um, given, okay, I run the money. I want to give my money to this group. I get that. But giving some of our money to the group and some to this guy who helped and this guy that helped and this guy that helped. So like we're becoming, I know you said we charge you the administration fee now, but we're doing the accounting. I mean. I guess. Is, how, how, where, where do you draw the line on how many checks can you write? I mean. What, what if there's 10 high school kids helping them and they all get a piece of the pie or?
Well, we've done that. I, I mean, as far as I remember, we, that's how we've done it. So when there's five kids working.
If they're working as town employees, just like, um, just like the summer rec kids. Is a town employees, they, they have the 1099s on file, right? So. None of the, these kids, some could, some might not, but the ones like to do the summer camp, they're town employees.
Oh yeah, that's different. That's different. I'm thinking of like the, I know for instance, the volleyball one. I, that's why I reflect back because we multiple. And actually I think it was one of the names here that wanted a check for basketball is one of, we wrote it out to three different. Kids of that individual that was the organizer. I mean, I, would I move it forward with saying, hey, if we, we'd write one check to a charitable organization on the behalf of. The program, I would, I would concede to say, okay, that I'd do that compared to no checks at all. The program, I would I would concede to say, okay, that I'd do that compared to no checks at all.
Um I think it's it's different because I feel like um. Yeah, no, I I think it's cleaner if we do not. Um I and I am all for people giving donations to the town. But that is a personal choice. That is his choice. We are giving him money for services that he has provided to a program. And if he decides he wants to do something different with that money, then that is his choice. I do not. Not think the town should be in the middle of that. And it's weird because I think that.
You don't like to donate money?
I would normally side with, that would normally be a comment that I would make. And maybe it's PTSD from everything that we went through. In the past with with this and somebody else wanting to do it. I am I am all for people giving the town donations. I think it should be done by them. I don't think that we should be a middle man.
So what about the, there's there's groups that don't take payment for the programs they run and that money just stays in in the either the. Well, the rec or the town.
If that is, if if at the beginning of the program, that person decides, listen, keep that money in that line item, don't pay me, I don't want it, I'm volunteering my services. That to me feels better than at the end of the year at or at the end of a program. Having him make that decision and us forwarding checks to.
So you're saying if they designate it in the beginning of the program, you'd be on board with writing that check to a.
Yeah, then the money never leaves, never leaves the the um the line item. Now, that would mean that they would have to agree to give that donation right back to that line item. But why are we gonna be the middle man to say, I don't want that money. I want you instead to pay this person a little tiny bit, that program a little tiny bit, and this group a little tiny bit like that just. That's not the business that we should be in.
So what if, just throwing a plain devil's advocate on some of that is, what if the drama program, the drama teacher? As the drama program says, I'm running this this program. And I want that money to go to the drama program. So she's they're running it as the group.
So she's donating, she is waiving her her salary?
Her time.
Waiving her fee?
Her time, just or the basketball, for this instance, it was basketball. If he says, I'm running this as the basketball group. And I want the money to stay within the the team's athletic fund.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's where the money would have come out of to pay him anyway.
No.
He doesn't want, right?
Not if they run it through a rec program.
No, this is this is run out of a rec program.
So I'm saying if I'm an I'm a group, running it through the rec program, does that money, can we then write a check to that group? It's almost like the soccer program or any of the, it's a it's a company that runs our the some of those soccer weeks. And we write the check to that company. So if this group and even though they're out of the athletic fund or whatever, out of the school, they're saying, I'm running this as a drama club program. And I want those proceeds to go back to the drama club at whatever fund they call it over at the school. Are we okay with writing that check that way?
So Nicole, the money, um so here's the rec, they're the bank, right? And the coach is over here and there's a here's the booster club. Saying, instead of giving me the money, the booster club the money, if he says, I don't want them, I'll do it for free, it stays in rec, boost doesn't get it, stays in the rec, which is part of the budget. The rec could then say, if they overrun some other programs, say, oh, we have extra money because. Coach didn't take money, we can do a line item, transfer within that within that line, but doesn't help the booster club at all. So that what the coach is saying. I'd love to have these kids get new warmups or new uniforms or whatever. With this $5,000, maybe we can do that. And then so that now the parents don't have to pay and the town's not paying, the school's not paying, so. I'm like, hey, my $5,000 and just instead of giving it to me, give it to them. That's what. And I don't mind doing a one-off. I just don't want to do give some 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 some, I I don't think I need to do that a comic.
But it sounds like the auditor and that our town lawyer are suggesting to keep it clean. And to pay them and have them as a citizen decide what they want to do.
That's what they wanted, but I also think coming from an auditor that keeps it clean. So it's. Yes, it's it's a it's a clearer flow of money, right? He did the product, he's getting paid. So.
But if they do it as a group, it'd be the same thing. So I'll make a motion and then we could discuss and you could vote it down. But I'll I'll make a motion. That in. In order to donate or to pay a. A group or a um I'm trying to think of the wording to use. A fundraising entity. We need to know that you have to declare that in the start and run it as that group. If that's clear. That might not be that clear.
He's a whiz.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is basically, and we can we can wordsmith this together, maybe if you guys are on board. But basically saying, at the start of this, I'm saying this money, I'm running this program for the basketball. What I'm reaching out to.
I understand what you're saying. You're saying, I'm running as a representative from the booster club. So the booster club is really running this. I'm their rep. I'm the guy that's doing this for free for them to run the camp. They get the check.
Right, or I'm the I'm running this as the basketball team's coach for the benefit of the. The the basketball team's uh fundraising.
Activity fund, right.
So but they have to do it from the start and we have to, that's how we list it.
So basically, it's the activity fund is running the camp. The coach is just their liaison. He's the guy doing it for them.
So at least, so they'll have to put a little work in in the front to say, this is what I'm doing. This is we're writing one check. It's clean for the auditor that way, I think, because it's coming in and it's going right to the the whatever club or group or organization that is.
So they say, who ran the basketball camp? Say the the basketball activity fund ran the basketball camp. The coach is just the guy doing the work.
Yeah. And it at least gives them the option. If they want to jump through those hoops, then they can. If not, they'll take the money and do what they want.
I I think it was declared upfront, would make it cleaner. Cause now it's still, the peoples that say they're running it are the ones that are getting the check.
Yeah.
All the coach is doing is all the legwork. I could I could live with that. You know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Is that the motion?
Well, we haven't, I just want to know in theory, do you understand what that is and you agree with it?
Theory, I understand what you're talking about. Yes.
Would you support something like that?
I I I am asking, I'm gonna vote for the cleanest possible. They get paid for the work they're doing and then they decide whatever they want to do with that money. So you, I mean, I clearly, um this will be, this will be a first for uh for you as your parting gift. So you guys make the the motion, but.
You just want the taxman to take more money. I understand.
No, and that and that does, that does stink. I understand that. But I just feel. For lack of a better word, icky, getting in the middle of somebody deciding what they want to do with money that they, we have given them to do a service.
What if we added a piece where, as Brett said, where they would take each individual. Uh each individual approached this and say, we have to look, the board of segment have to look at each time they want to do this and approve it.
I I think that that.
I mean, it doesn't happen that often. Once a year.
Twice a year the most.
Once a year, maybe so.
Maybe you'd have to say no to that individual group and say, no, I'm not giving you the money.
Without clear guidelines of when we're gonna approve it and when we're not. It doesn't seem fair.
I just think if if the if the we'll call it a booster group, so the basketball booster group said, they want to run a basketball camp. For the town of North Stonington. And so, okay, and then we're gonna give them the money. They might not even say, oh, by the way, the coach is the one running it. We're the ones, he's running it for us.
Yeah. So I I to me, isn't that as clear as saying it's the person? Because it's clear from the start, it's one or entity, whether it's a booster group or the soccer company that we pay. Who pays their employees independently?
Be like, what if the Wheeler Drama Club wants to run a drama camp? And they would be the ones who would get the money, even though Mrs. Travaris is actually running the camp, but the drama club is officially the one who is running the camp. So they get the money. Or Mrs. Travaris is the one that's with the director. Like, does that clean up a bit for you?
It's it's clearer.
Why don't we make a motion? I didn't really think this is the one I was gonna hold.
Somebody asked AI what the best motion would be for that one because uh so I'll make a motion that if a group. Booster group, nonprofit entity. School activity group wants to run a rec program, it's declared from the start. And we allow that money to go back to that entity.
Jen's gonna kill you tomorrow when she has to figure this out. Um I guess I I'll second that motion. Also, at that point. We can still discuss it, but and I'm not sure that was the cleanest motion, but I think that.
So do you think that that motion covers any? And all of the possible options that we would have in asking somebody to waive their fee and donate it to somebody else?
So they're no longer waiving it.
Right.
It's no wavering. And so that that whole waiver thing's done by doing this by saying that basically anyone, we could advise the coach. Coach, if you're gonna try to waive your money, move it over here, then instead of you doing the program, why don't we have the group that you want to waive the money to let them do the program? You can act as their liaison.
I understand that.
Yeah, so there'll be no more, don't give me the money, give them the money automatically from day one, they're they're getting the money.
So it does cut out other people that might want to say, I ran a program for basketball, but you know what I really want? I really want the volleyball team to get new uniforms. So I'm gonna donate. So it does cut that out, correct? All right.
Sounds like the volleyball team's the one who ran the basketball camp. Right?
All right.
Yeah.
So.
So this is, and we're going to put this in the donation policy.
Yeah, the rest of the policy is a great policy, by the way. Well, it just this wasn't covered anyway. It even covers the fact that if you're in a a paid employee, you can't donate.
Right, which I think that clarifies the the last year issue.
Yeah, we cleared that up. All right, I'm I am, thank you for swaying me and.
So really, really, we're just saying that what was running a program gets paid. We just have to tell somebody like the coach, by the way, you can't run the program anymore.
Yeah.
The end, the end, whoever's getting the check is the one who's running the program.
Um as we're discussing this, since it kind of falls under this um. And it falls under rec and there's nowhere else on it. And I've been thinking this since that rec program fee went into place. When I see the monthly or the checks that we write and they're all handwritten now. I know we talked about it when we implemented that fee, but I would like a standard. Hope we can get a standard form that is just like checkboxes. They used the facilities, they didn't use the facilities, the numbers are in there, not a. I think we need to get away from handwritten. Slips from the rec department and just put, make a form for them that they just fill out who who's who ran the program, the number of applicants. And then a checkbox, they take the fee, they don't, and it's compared to the handwritten, it feels like we're.
So this is right up Jen's alley, believe me. So and you still have, you don't have to hook up tonight. You still have some days and.
I still have have some, yeah.
So I think I think it's gonna be great for you to to coordinate with Jen exactly how you want this form to, she's great at this. I mean, you know, those cards that just went out, every dog got the card about to change.
Yeah, that was very nice.
She did that. She designed it. She did it. She, yeah, perfect. And she likes those kind of projects. So why don't you, between. Now and whenever.
Sure.
Just give her an idea what you want it to look like. She'll produce it. You can look at it and I'm sure that would be great.
And then this, it'll be cleaner for this kind of stuff. So the rec department has it, they know the program and they're just checking boxes because it also makes it easier on the director not to have to write all this stuff out.
Yeah, I agree. So if you don't mind doing that, I think um she would love to do it and and yeah, she got a lot of compliments on that mail of how it how it looked.
It was nice.
Okay, so I guess, is there a motion? Or or is it basically, are we just? Are we basically just doing it the way we do it now? We just have to instruct the somebody like the coach that he can't. Whoever the end, whoever runs the camp gets the check.
Yeah.
Whoever runs the program gets the checks. Are we really changing anything?
Well, I think having that motion and just that verbiage, some kind of that verbiage.
So so now that we have the additional discussion, you want to clean that up a little bit? Uh just say somehow whoever runs the program gets the check. How would you want to say that?
Yeah, whichever entity or group runs the program gets the check. From we need to know that from the start.
Right.
Is is it? And. The problem is, does that explain it to a coach or is that just our job?
So I think it really has to be explained to the recreation director and the recreation, the board of recreation, right? So. Um recreation committee. So if they know and the director knows, then they're the ones that will explain it to whoever's running the program. And I can have that discussion with Tom.
All right, so I'll amend it to say what I just said. Jed could replay it.
Okay, I'll second it. Uh there's any other discussion?
Please God.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that was a great three zero. I think that was the perfect solution, how we just did that. Good old team effort. That's right. Perfect. All right.
Let's get done, discussion.
Now, who's gonna do the tax refunds tonight?
I can do that.
Let Brett do it or?
I should have looked at the page before I, so I'll make a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $2,445.93 to Ally Financial. Quench USA and Vincent Nadala Nadonoli. Sorry for that uh pronunciation. I apologize.
Can you second? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we don't have any old business now, but I know we're gonna have some at our next meeting. Um there's like three or four boards that need reappointments. Um like WPCA is one of them. I don't know the other ones. I'll have to look at them. Um but they're not, they're all. Run out on November 23rd and our next meeting's November 18th, next official meeting. So we can do it then. Uh is there any public comments?
Aye.
Who has a public comment? Okay.
I just want to say one other public comment because you you brought it up during about the the um letter going out. What about the the town, the voting?
Oh, the card, the postcard.
I'm curious, wondering if the 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 next administration wants to look at the naming of Town Hall versus New Town Hall. I think for residents that haven't been here for a while. While you get a postcard that says at the new town hall, someone's like, wait, we built the new town hall. A town hall can encompass more than one building. So it might make sense to just call that Town Hall. Cause it's what, 40, 50 something years since the new town hall was done.
It's actually, it was built in the 60s. So, yeah, it's over 60 years old and it's not quite new anymore.
Yeah, so it just, I just want to throw, I meant to say it earlier.
I always think it's kind of funny because they'll say, well, what's it new? Also, you see the building I'm in, that's the old, oh, this is a real old town hall.
I just think it can be confusing to newer residents because or residents that don't even understand that there were two separate ones at some time.
I get it.
Think about it for the next administration.
Okay, well, if if the previous administration got their way, it would have been like a gift shop, a store and and the town hall would have been over here somewhere. So anyway, okay. So was that, was that your comment? Oh, okay. Do you want to make a public?
Go ahead. Standing up.
Oh, okay. Well, that's okay. I want to publicly acknowledge Brett at his last meeting after 18 years of service to the town of North Stonington. Everyone has seen him at a million meetings over the years, but it never ended there for Brett. I have witnessed the hundreds of hours on the phone, incessant texting and even efforts to explain things on social media. I have observed Brett connecting people and groups for the greater good. I have witnessed his mediation efforts to repair relationships between people that needed to work together. I have seen Brett passionately connect with residents who need help. For years, I watched. The never-ending stream of people come into his store, some with questions, concerns, complaints, and others that just wanted to talk about town business. And I watched Brett have energy for every one of them, so much so that at times it was to his own detriment. I've seen the sleepless nights agonizing about an issue or trying to come up with a solution. Into what seems like an intractable problem. I've seen the exhaustion and frustration. I've seen the exhaustion and frustration after difficult meetings. I've watched the personal sacrifices that he's made when. His full self to what he believes needs to be done in order to honor this role. He never saw his commitment to this town as limited to two meetings a month. As a town. We've all heard Brett's voice, he has an opinion and a position on just about everything. It's strong, sometimes fiery, usually comes along with a statutory reference. Brett will tell anyone who will listen where he stands on an issue, he is unad bashably real. He will fearlessly take on anything and anyone when he feels passionate. And appears unbothered by the naysayers. But I have witnessed the toll that being such a strong advocate has taken on him. My words cannot express how proud I am of everything that Brett has done for this town over the years. It is nothing short of remarkable. He has been involved in more projects and initiatives than I can count. He has motivated people to get involved. He tirelessly works to make sure people get accurate information. He's a wealth of knowledge, and even people that don't align with his views often come to him seeking information about town issues. He is so enthusiastic and always seems to find a way to get things done. I can't pretend to be sad that he's ending municipal service. Selfishly, the kids and I are so proud to have more Brett to ourselves, we're so excited. Brett, you have given your heart and soul to this town. Over the last few months, I've had the privilege of witnessing so many people express their sadness that you are not on the ballot and thanking you for what you have done. But I could not let this meeting end without thanking you and telling you and everyone else how truly amazing you are and how proud you've made your family.
Thank you, Steph. I guess I was like. Steph, that was, Steph, that was word for word where I was going to say so, except for the kid part.
Mine is the kid part.
I surely can't top that, but I was going to thank you very much for your service. For however long it's been, but I can't do that. Thank you so much. Should I turn this thing off?
Um, you can, we'll get it before we leave. Unless somebody else has something to say, no. Well, thank you, Ann. I hope you're around to say the same thing when I'm out of here, because.
I'm sorry?
You better stick around for a while. Coming from you, who's been here for a long, long time, I'm sure, I'm not trying to speak for Brett, but I think.
Where's the cake and the celebration? You're just going to walk off into the.
It's all in the back room.
It's all in the back room. Anyway.
Thank you, Ed, I appreciate that.
So we do have something for you, um. Bob was quite. Pleased with himself, a treat. For you. You, um, at one point, we thought we would, um, he would get one for all three of us, and we would sit here and eat it, and then he called me today and said, I've decided that we're just going to go ahead and give it, he can take it home and eat it.
With his wife.
A little disappointed.
So I thought, I was going to bring a cake, and I figured, who's got better pastry than Sif, right? So they don't have. Have cakes, they have pastries. I said, well, why don't we do this, just give him the pastry, let him and Steph go home and have a nice pastry and think about all your years of service. I will say this, I've said this to many people. Um, I am a better first selectman because I've worked with you. We met on December fifteenth, two thousand eight, um. And the Hacks School for the Committee is when I first met Brett, first met Saint Shirensia, first met Arthur Dobley, there was a crew of us that we first put our toe in the water with this whole thing and. And that's when we first met each other, and I will say that the um. Uh, it's been times that we've disagreed. But I will. It's I I know I have weaknesses and you've filled those gaps for me. Um, you've made me better at my job because of you filling those gaps. Uh, even to the point of me, you know, holding my feet to the fire, saying, no, we need three quotes, Bob, I'm not saying this, we've got three quotes. And I and I get that, and I think that, um. Yeah, I don't think I could do this job if I just had yes men working with me. You know, I love, I like the fact, not always. But I like the fact that you and Nicole vote one way and I voted the other way, and I don't get my vote the way I want it. But we, you know, we always go home. Knowing that if I lost the vote, we're still doing, we all. Our hearts are in all the right place, we all want to do what's best for the town. If we don't agree, we don't go home and pow and get get upset about it. The next week we come and we start again. And I think. If you're sitting in the audience, you can never tell who's in what party on this board. No one can say that, oh, that must be a Republican, and and that's a great way, because we. Not, we sit at this table, we're not Democrats or Republicans, we're public servants, which best for the song, and I think you. You um, have presented yourself as that in the last four years, and I think it's um. What you had make me grow, the ability for me to grow with your help and your help to Nicole has been. And phenomenal, and I I appreciate everything you've done the last four years. I wish you nothing but the best. I, and I think too, with with the your children, with the ages they are. It's that time when they do need parents, you know, they're going off to college and they're becoming young adults and. And um, you could, if you had to plan it, and I know it's not easy, but this is like the perfect time for you to take a breath. You know, and you've got a fairly new job still, and I'm sure they love you because you're the epitome of a sales manager, so. Um, I think that it's a perfect time in your life to take a breath, concentrate on your family and your job, and uh, look back and appreciate all the things you've done. And and I'm sure you're not disappearing, I'm sure, I'm going to get your two cents here and there. Um, down the road.
You're going to get my two cents, all right. Now that I'm not on board, my public comments will be.
But can you can, can we, can we get like a maybe a six month thumb? But uh, no, I just, and I, that's all I wanted to say tonight, is how much I appreciate you and we, and, oh, by the way, you get to keep your nameplate.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so slide it right out of there.
Oh, I don't get to keep the stand?
Well, you, do you want the stand? If you want the stand, you can have it. I'm just, we can get another stand, but um, so I just, we will probably have a meeting on the twelfth, just a quick meeting to call. For the town, but oh, thank you for everything that you've done, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have, I think that I have felt like I've been in denial for several months now. I have learned so much from you. I love the statute. Um, uh, comment because we, Bob is right, you filled the gap where we. Could not um, uh, comment. When you sat over there for three quarters of. The last four years, I got to the point where I could literally look across the table and look at your face and know exactly what you were thinking. Exactly, just with your eyes, you could tell me, you go first, and I'll go, I mean, it got to the point where I could. I could anticipate, I know when you start to get passionate and you start to ruffle your papers, um, I. Remember probably our second meeting. When we all took um, office, and it was the meeting on the solar farm. And it was heated, it was heated in the room, it was heated at our table. And at the end, you kind of were just packing up your stuff and you were going to, you know, take off and. We stopped and we talked. And I said, listen, if this is going to, right, if this is going to work, we're going to have to understand that we're not always going to agree. And honest to God, Brett, that was the last time in four years that I have ever felt. I couldn't leave. The room at the end of the night. And not know that we were friends, that if I saw. You at PTO Festival, if I saw you downtown, we have become more than just public servants together, we've become friends. So thank you.
Who says you can't have your cake and eat it too? I'm excited.
Well, it's funny, when when Ann says, do you have cake in the back room? I go, how does she know that?
Ann knows everything now.
So, uh, okay, so, um. Actually, the next meeting is. I'm going to let you know, next meeting's November eighteenth is the next regular meeting, but um, I'm going to probably send an email to see, we can't have a special meeting on the twelfth, just fifteen minutes to call, I've now got to put the call together. But I can't put it together until the appropriation gets approved. I didn't know what we were doing tonight with Avalonia and those kind of things, so now I can put it together. But yes, we can accept, we can look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome.
Well, does it favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. At, hold on, sorry, Jen, um, eight thirty-one, thank you.